I would like to make some introductory comments for our special Fall Town Meeting to set the stage for discussions and voting. As you know, our main focus tonight is to decide whether or not to create a North Sherburne Water and Sewer District, which would be connected to Framingham's MWRA, Water Supply, and Sewage Treatment Resources. The primary urgency for the session this fall is that the Toll Brothers Development Firm is in due diligence to take over two projects that were approved by the town voters in another town meeting in 2017. And Toll Brothers needs to reach a decision on whether to proceed in the next month or so, so that's the reason why we're having a special Fall Town Meeting. The water district infrastructure supplying these projects would be paid for fully by Toll Brothers and then would be provided to the water district to operate. The objective for the proposed projects is to significantly increase the number of affordable designated housing units to put us in safe harbor with respect to 40B development projects where we have less control. It's also important that the water district resources will supply not only these new projects, proposed projects, but also all of the abutters in the North Sherburne designated area. That can be vital if water supplies become challenged. So I would echo what the moderator said, we treat each other with respect and always assume positive intent. We're all interested in what's best for our families and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walrath. Mr. Sickle.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening. I'm Dan Sickle, Chair of the Advisory Committee, and I'd like to add my welcome and thank you all for coming tonight. Before we get further along, I wanted to share just a little information on the Advisory Committee and what the committee did to prepare for this meeting. So the committee consists of nine town residents, all of whom agree to spend a lot of time considering the issues that face us at town meetings. And the underlying logic is to have a Citizens Committee that can take the time to dig in, understand, and assess complicated issues, and then, based on that assessment, make recommendations to town meeting. As preparation for tonight, the committee met several times in meetings open to the public, and the committee held a public hearing with considerable citizen input that considered the items before us tonight. That hearing on September 27th lasted nearly four hours, and the outcome is the summary and set of recommendations that appear in the advisory report. As you saw in that report, the committee supported all the articles before us tonight. And I want to take just a minute to acknowledge and thank the other members of the committee for their time and hard work these past months. So they include Wassim Basali, Michael Flanagan, Paul Pilat, Nora Lynch Smith, Shelley Suber, Natalie Weir, Mike Winters, who's sitting to my right, and is Vice Chair of the Advisory Committee, and also Penn Young. So I hope that advisory's report and presentations tonight are helpful, and I hope we have a productive and civil meeting. Thanks.
To begin the legislative part of our meeting, we will address Housekeeping Articles 1 and 2 through a consent agenda. Article 1, nomination papers. Article 2, dog fund. Mr. Sickle.
Madam Moderator, I move that Articles 1 and 2 be considered together as consent agenda articles, where such articles are routine and typically approved without significant debate, and with such articles moved for favorable action as set forth in the advisory report.
Hearing no holds. I would ask the selectmen how they voted on these two articles.
We voted unanimously on both.
Okay. The consent agenda for Articles 1 and 2 has been moved and seconded. There is no debate on a consent agenda, so please vote now. Okay, so I will, Ron, I want to move to Slide 12. Article 3, roundabout at Washington and Maple. Mr. Winters.
I move favorable action and that the town authorize the construction of a roundabout and other traffic improvements to the intersection of Washington Street and Maple Street, the plans for which are available for the public at the office of the town clerk and the town's website, and to fund such roundabout and traffic improvements by one, transferring $134,778.93 of funds initially borrowed to pay the cost of the Pine Hill Access Road project pursuant to Article 10, Item 5 of the warrant at the 2021 annual town meeting, and $35,372.29 of funds initially borrowed to pay costs of paving at the transfer station pursuant to Article 8, Item 7 of the warrant at the 2013 annual town meeting, which funds in each case are no longer necessary to complete the respective projects for which they were authorized to be borrowed, and by 2, the remaining balances of funds previously appropriated by the town for this roundabout, 3, any available funds from the Commonwealth pursuant to Chapter 90 allocations to the town of Sherburne, and 4, the amounts of any available funding from any state or federal grants.
Second. And how did the Select Board vote on this? How?
The Select Board unanimously voted in favor of Article 3 also.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I would now open the floor for debate. If anyone has any questions or comments that they wish to make about Article 3, please approach one of the microphones.
Ted Wong, I live on Maple Street, and I'm not sure of the benefits of putting roundabouts on Maple Street and Washington Street. Every day I go there during rush hour, and the big hangup seems to be at the intersection of 16 and 27, not at Washington Street and Maple Street. People seem to be courteous, and they do let people out in St. Havana, and this is for a short time during the day. I think adding the roundabout will delay traffic 24 hours a day as we drive down Route 16 from Holliston or to Holliston. I don't see the need to spend $1.4 million for the town's safety. I believe it'd be better spent on maybe sidewalks on Maple Street. You know, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Artis Falale, 32 Maple Street. It is, in fact, a dangerous intersection. There's no question about that. However, I believe that a roundabout is going to create traffic problems at the intersection of Maple Street and 16, and slow traffic. I can imagine people entering the roundabout and clogging up the flow of traffic. Right now, when there is significant traffic, the flow continues as people let one car through or another car through, but it seems to me that a roundabout is going to clog up traffic pretty well at the busiest times of day. And I would concur that I would love to see a sidewalk on Maple Street, but that's not what's being addressed right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I spent...
Could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Green Shadu. I live on 167 South Main. So 2021, 2022, I spent about a year and a half sending my kids to Ashland, so I go through that intersection every day from Sanger to Maple and then from Maple back. So I agree with the proposal because going from Sanger to Maple and coming from Maple to Sanger, it's a very precarious situation because the traffic, as you all know, on Washington Street is very fast. And then going from Maple to Sanger, you don't have a very good view on the left-hand side from the intersection of North Main and Washington coming this way. So I think the roundabout will improve the safety of that intersection. And we did discuss in the family about, you know, the potential impact to the speed at that intersection. I think with my experience going to Wellesley, there is a roundabout over there. I think with very little traffic, the roundabout is not going to slow you down significantly because as you approach, you can see on your left-hand side very clearly if there is a car or not. If there is, you'll obviously slow down. If there isn't, you can just go, I haven't looked at the drawing, but I think it won't be a very big roundabout, so it doesn't take much steering for you to go through that and just go through that roundabout. So I think I'll be supporting this article.
Thank you. Addie May, I think you're the next one.
Yes, Addie May, West 1 Jackson Road. As a citizen who's traveled the road plenty of times and sees that it's a dangerous intersection, and also as someone who's traveled around the state and experienced many roundabouts, especially the one on 115 in Norfolk, which we exhibited and Planning Board during previous discussions presented as an example of one that works really well even when you have a train backing up and people exiting, traffic flows smoothly, pedestrian access is safer. Yes, we'd all love more sidewalks in town, and definitely something that Planning Board and Public Works and many town boards are working on, but for right now, the roundabout, there's plenty of evidence to suggest it will not slow traffic down further. We can't promise it's going to speed up things, but it will definitely make things safer for both pedestrians and vehicles.
Thank you. Frank.
Hello, my name is Frank, 6 Town Line Road. I have a quote here from Norfolk Police Chief Chuck Stone, who in Norfolk have been in a number of years ago, over a decade ago, two roundabouts in their town on a very busy section, and I read his quote. The whole idea to keep traffic moving, I can recall that traffic would back up as a commuter hours in all directions for a half a mile or so, combined with the commuter rail peak traffic, and that it would irritate many and cause a lot of hand-waving and finger gestures. I highly recommend making the change. In another section of his quote, he also mentioned that they used to have about 35 to 40 accidents in that area, and it was reduced down to virtually zero.
Thank you. Okay, so we have had, motion has been made, I'm sorry, is this gentleman looking to speak? Okay.
Mark Senate, 75 Rossett Hill Road. Just a question, maybe I didn't do my homework, sounds like you did. Traffic studies were done, yes, and they were done and they showed what? So we all say, I know it's going to be safer, but I assume we've done traffic studies to make sure traffic isn't going to get worse. So I'm asking, if they were done, what was the result? Fill me in on that. Thanks.
Does someone have information for Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jeremy Marsette, Town Administrator. The intersection was designed by Kimberly Horn and Associates. They're transportation engineers. They're a consulting firm that does that as their business, and they did traffic studies and have developed the design plans and show that this will be an improvement to safety and the efficiency of operation of the intersection.
Thank you. Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Discussion is now closed, and you may vote now. Mr. Winters.
I move favorable action and that the town approve the amended preliminary development plan dated August 15, 2023, unfiled in the office of the town clerk for the Meadowbrook Commons project located at 104 Coolidge Street, the original of which was approved pursuant to Section 5.6.3 of the zoning bylaws in conjunction with amending the zoning map to EA for the subject property at the special town meeting of December 5, 2017, provided that the project is in compliance with the zoning bylaws of the town, including the required number of affordable housing units.
Second. How did the Select Board vote on this article?
The Select Board voted 4 to 0 in favor with 1 absent.
Thank you. I believe we have a presentation on this. And I think we're switching to the other set of slides.
Is this mic working?
Yeah, just tilt it down a little so that your voice is going right into it.
Am I able to be heard? Okay. All right, thanks, everyone. Addie May Weiss, on behalf of the Planning Board tonight to talk about this article. And basically, the little history is 2016, 2017. As a town, we worked with the developer to change a proposed 40B project at 88 Town Houses to a more favorable EA project. This favorable EA project, we then worked out over the summer of 2017, lots of little details. We came to a special town meeting, December 5, 2017, and presented the preliminary development plan for EA rezoning. The property was rezoned under EA. The benefit of EA is it's a Sherburne zoning. It is not a 40B project. It is a Sherburne zoning, which means it follows town zoning and town bylaws. So 2017, we have a preliminary development plan. The next step now is for a developer to submit a definitive development plan, which goes to the Planning Board. Process falls under all regulatory boards, and the conclusion of that process is a special permit by Planning Board, and after which then, after satisfactory review of definitive development plan, developer may apply for building permit. It follows the Town Stormwater, Town Board of Health, Town Conservation bylaws, all under EA zoning. So what is Article 4 all about? Article 4 is now, we have slight tweak to the plan. You've got, on the right here, you've got the new proposed preliminary development plan for 2023. On the left, you have the previously approved preliminary development plan from 2017. You see, there's not a lot of difference. The average change is for 200 additional square feet on first and second floor for homes. That's a general total average increase per home of, basically 200 square, about 400 square feet total, but on each floor. So from 2,034 square feet houses to 2,452 square feet. This is not a big change. However, the total across all the units does constitute more than 10% change, which is why we have to have it approval at town meeting for an updated preliminary plan. The overall footprint has not changed. So you can see that side by side. If anything, the public green space has increased, and the buffer zones are better for neighbors. The 2023 graphic rendering that we are seeing here does show homes in the largest size possible to illustrate to buyers who want to buy one of the largest of the three home plans being sold, that it will fit the space anywhere in the site development, within all the buffer setbacks and open space requirements being met. So in sum, what's being shown on this graph is actually bigger than what could possibly be built, because it's all of the larger size. Again, as an EA zone project, this is only a preliminary development plan. A definitive development plan will go for full standard review under all local, all local boards, and the Planning Board unanimously supported Article 4. Thank you.
All right. Is there debate or discussion on Article 4? If you wish to make a comment, ask a question, please approach a microphone. Over here? Yes?
Hi, everybody. Jean Widdemeyer, 25 Meadowbrook Road. I spoke to the moderators earlier. I would like to make a motion to amend the motion for Article 4.
Okay, and this is the one that begins requirement to extend public... This is for my, yeah, if you want to put that up. Oh, yes, can we have a switch back to this computer here?
Should I read this?
Yes, please read it, just to be sure that what it says is what we think it says.
Oh, okay. Motion to amend the motion for Article 4. This Article 4 is conditioned on the requirement to extend public water and sewer access down Meadowbrook Road for all Meadowbrook Road residents at the same time as the installation of the public water and sewer pipe down Coolidge for the Meadowbrook Commons and the Coolidge Crossing projects at the expense of the developer.
Do you have a second for that?
I have a second.
If somebody wants to give me their names a second, that would be great. Your names, what? Thank you.
Please consider the small ask. The developer is going to make a lot of money on these projects, and the sole purpose of Article 4 is that so the developer can make more money. And everyone in the room, I think, knows the risk of construction on private wells, and I think everyone also knows that more construction means more risk on private wells. This is a 20%, over 20% increase. I think it's 20.5 or something. I think for this risk, added risk, the only humane time to run pipe down Meadowbrook Road is before well contamination, not after well contamination.
If you can wind it up, you're two minutes early.
Okay. The alternative to having the developer pay for the public pipeline is that the 12 homes on Meadowbrook Road have to pay as individuals. If it's too expensive for the developer, it's probably too expensive for the residents.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So, just so that we all under, oh, we have another comment, sorry.
Lou. Madam Moderator, I would actually prefer, if it's possible, if we go ahead and have this vote before. I have a completely different comment.
Okay, that's fine. So, just so that everyone understands, we are voting now, only will be voting now, only on this amendment. We are not voting on the main motion that was made by advisory. We are voting only on this amendment, and if there is further discussion on this amendment, you know, please speak now. Mary? Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay. This amendment deals with the water and sewer pipes down Meadowbrook Road that will be the subject of Article 5. Article 4, as I understand it, is simply about whether the preliminary plan, in this one instance where it has to go to town meeting regarding square footage, can be changed at this point. And it really is not about water and sewer, but I'd be happy to talk about water and sewer when that comes up in a future amendment.
Okay, thank you, Mary. The gentleman who has the mic now?
Yes, Neil Kessler, 43 Page Road. I don't know if this is going to end up as a motion to amend the next article, but I just wanted to speak in support of this motion because I think that, you know, there's a big impact from this project and the project next to it, Coolidge Crossing, from this development, and the town is asking Meadowbrook to bear the brunt of that development. And I think the least that the town and developers can do is to provide the infrastructure that they would need to protect their water when the construction that the town potentially wants is going to impact their homes disproportionately. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Sure. Sorry, yeah, Richard.
Richard, 117 Mill Street. The way this is worded, it looks as though if Article 5 fails, then Article 4, with this amendment, Article 4 would also fail. Is that the case? Even if we approve the amendment and Article 4, if Article 5 goes on to fail and therefore there is no sewer, there is no extension, then Article 4 can also take place.
Thank you, Richard. I have some words here from Town Council.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Heather White, Town Council. Can you hear me?
I think that is a potential concern with the way that this potential amendment is worded, where if it were to pass, it would be in full effect to the extent that it can be, and then if Article 5 does not pass, the validity of this vote, I think, or the effect of it, whether or not it could be implemented, would be in question. So I think to some extent, if this were to be approved, it would be merely advisory. I think there are a couple of aspects to it that would need to be evaluated for whether it's within the scope of town meeting's authority to impose certain requirements and whether or not there's a sufficient nexus of those requirements to the purposes of the preliminary development plan as defined in the zoning bylaw.
Thank you, Heather.
Hi, Brian, 215 South Main Street. My question is the requirement to extend public water and sewer access down Meadowbrook Road. The development will not impact septic systems, so why put in the sewer system as well? It's just about maintaining the safety of the water supply on Meadowbrook Road. So from my perspective, that is the son of a civil engineer who does this every day, you don't need the sewer access. The water access would be enough to protect the health and safety of people on Meadowbrook Road.
Thank you. Is there further? Sure.
Carol Mitchell, 121 Coolidge Street. I'd like to respond. Some of you may know that we are in the middle of getting our septic replaced to the tune of $70,000. And if septic systems fail down Meadowbrook Road or anywhere else, if this was five years ago that ours failed, we would be signing up right now. And septic systems don't last forever. As long as Meadowbrook Road is being torn up, why not put both of them down Meadowbrook Road?
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Is there any other comment? And Bob, you're holding off on this, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right, then, debate is closed. And remember, you are not voting on Article Four. You are simply voting on this amendment. All right? So please vote now. Eventually, we will be voting on the main motion, and it will be voting as amended by this or any other amendments that pass this evening. All right, Bob, you've been patiently waiting.
Great, thank you. I have two questions, two quick questions. The first, sorry, Bob Murchison, 177 Lake Street, for those of you who don't know. The first is for the author of this document. It has the pink map on it. May I ask a question of the author?
Yeah, who did the handout for this evening? So that Bob knows who to address this question to.
This, the one pager, one page on each side? It's actually about Article Five, but it's terribly relevant to Article Four as well.
Is that you, Marian?
I didn't hand out.
So my question is this. It says on the handout that for Meadowbrook Commons, that it's fifteen percent affordable with ten SHI units. The preliminary development plan that we are voting on tonight has seven affordable units in it. This is something, it's not a gotcha tonight. This is something I brought forth a month ago, okay? That sheet is incorrect. It's not ten. The preliminary development we're voting on tonight has seven. The other three units are, at this point, up in the air. And I don't like the fact that the public information statement says ten, when that's not true. The plan is for seven that we're voting on tonight.
Marian, do you have a response?
Yeah, I should, but Addie May go first, perhaps, because she's the opponent.
Apologies on the presentation, the preliminary site plan, the developer is aware that the zoning bylaw, the zoning, all, as I said, EA zoning, all of the town's bylaws will be adhered to, and it will be, right now, inclusionary zoning requires fifteen percent affordable, which is ten units. So the developer has agreed to comply with the town's zoning bylaws, and that was the purpose and benefit of EA zoning.
So I believe the developer is present here tonight, even though they have not presented, as is required under the law. Perhaps the developer could stand up and tell us that there will, in fact, be ten affordable units in this project.
Is the developer here and wishes to speak?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so I'll follow up with my second question, Madam Moderator, if that's okay?
Sure.
So my second question would be to Attorney White. And to Attorney White, my question is, the amendment that was put forth by the advisory tonight, okay, is, well, you've read it, obviously. My question about the amendment is this. Planning Board Chair Chris Owen, at their last meeting, put on their agenda a discussion of an article for spring town meeting to reduce the affordable housing requirement of our inclusionary zoning law. My question is, if Chris is successful in getting that passed, does that mean the developer doesn't have to pay us the two and a half million dollars or provide the three additional units of affordable housing?
Well, to begin with, Bob, your information on this.
My question, Madam Moderator, was to Town Council.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And I assume you're referring to the Finance Committee's motion, not amendment, is that correct?
The Advisory Committee's motion.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm referring to the Advisory Committee's motion. If Chris's idea of an article at town meeting in the spring is passed, then can the developer get out from under a two and a half million dollar payment to the town?
Whenever the provisions of the zoning bylaw are that are in effect at the time that they apply for the permit or what will apply to the project.
Okay, so I will assume that that means if the planning board puts forth an article and the town reverses the inclusionary zoning bylaw, then we will lose the two and a half million dollars.
Do you want to address that question to whom?
Anybody who wants to answer?
All right. Well, I guess either Marian or Addie May wants to answer it.
I believe it's a planning board question regarding the inclusionary zoning bylaw. The inclusionary zoning bylaw provides developers the opportunity to either build fifteen percent affordable SHI restricted units, or there is an option, if the developer comes to town with a subdivision presentation, they may choose to do what is called payment in lieu. We purposely, as a planning board and town, made provisions for payment in lieu to be generous, so that if the town needed to build the affordable units on their own, which is much more costly than a developer building that affordable unit, and based on eighteen months' worth of housing sales comps, and that's where you're getting that two point five million number, I mean, inclusionary zoning. If the developer chooses not to build those, build the affordable units, they pay the housing trust based on that calculation. That fund only goes toward building, put towns to build more affordable housing. It may not be used for any other purpose. And it is not, we're not, anyway, that's all I'm going to say. The developer has agreed to comply with the zoning bylaw and town's zoning.
So my last question, Madam Moderator, and I'll sit down, is, and it's really a rhetorical question. What are we doing putting forth an article to try to save Toll Brothers two and a half million dollars? I just, I'm offended by this.
Okay. Marian?
Yeah. I would like to reply to all of the last two points. First of all, as far as what's on spring town meeting, is for spring town meeting. It's not for tonight. And the town then will have the opportunity to decide whether a change in the inclusionary zoning bylaw is a good change or a bad change. I don't know what the answer will be. It's not for debate tonight. As of now, the developer has committed to follow the zoning bylaws as they are written at the time that their definitive development plan goes in. And I also would emphasize that all this talk about two and a half million dollars is completely premature. The developer is now planning to put in fifteen affordable units. They'll figure out how they're going to do it. It's not up to us. I also would like to just comment on the demand in the amendment that water and sewer be provided all the way down Meadowbrook Road. And maybe I'll hold off on that, because that has already been settled. That would be out of order.
We have another comment?
I was concerned about.
Could you just identify yourself again, Jean?
121 Coolidge Street. I was concerned enough about this idea that the planning board was going to waive that, Bob. But today I wrote an email to Gino Carlucci and asked why in the world we would give back two, two point five million dollars. His response to me this afternoon was, hi, Carol, there is no Toll Brothers requirement to pay Sherburne any amount of money, and there is certainly nothing before planning board to waive such an obligation.
Thank you. All right, is there any further debate? Okay, that debate on this is closed, and we will be voting on the amended main motion. And that, can we get the original main motion out there? Debate is closed now. Thank you.
I can't submit another.
Well, I mean, you can submit another, yes, but please, in the future, try to bring Did that, has that come to the town clerk and to me?
No, it has not.
Okay.
I will just read what it says. This is a motion to amend Article Four as written. And it would say Article Four is conditioned on the requirement that a permanent bond be established at the expense of Toll Brothers of one million per house, sufficient to protect each resident of the Meadowbrook-Coolidge neighborhood from raised water table, flooding from coursebook, Meadowbrook pond, and connected wetlands, any release of manganese or other contamination of wells, septic issues, and other destruction of property that may result from the construction of Meadowbrook, of this Meadowbrook Commons. It seems to me, again, it would be wonderful if no damage happened as a result of this construction. And if indeed the town passes this water district, and then there is damage to the houses, foundations, wells, water table up, flooding, I think then it's too late for people on Meadowbrook Road to be made whole. And if a million dollar bond per house was set aside and it was never tapped, that would be fine, but then the residents would be protected.
Okay. So I think we have that text here that we can put up for people to see. Do you want to wait, or do you want to speak now, Paul? It's up to you.
I want to offer a friendly amendment.
Can you speak closer to the mic?
Hi, I wanted to offer a friendly amendment to the motion. I just take up the specific name of a specific company. First of all, we don't know what company might end up doing it, because there hasn't been any agreement. And secondly, if Toll Brothers is going to do it, they may subsidiary with a different name or something related to the, to make the amendment work better. Just speaking as a lawyer, that you use the word developer as opposed to Toll Brothers.
I'm happy to make that change, if that's possible.
Yes, it is, because your amendment hasn't been seconded yet. So, sure. So if Ryan down front here can make that change, oh, hang on for one minute, Chris, and then once we get the motion up there, we'll see if it gets a second. Yes. And Carol, can you, can you give us another copy of this?
I thought I could.
Oh, he has mine. I want to get the, and the amendment's got to be seconded before. Chris, you can talk if you wish, but it'll be up there in a minute.
Can I talk about it in general?
Sure, type, no, sure.
Good evening, Chris Owen, 2 Washington Street Chair of the Planning Board. This whole article, it's turning into a mess. This whole article was about the preliminary development plan. All they wanted was an increase in the square footage. Most of it was to finish the basements. All right? So all these things added to it don't belong here. It is absolutely ridiculous. The ask is very simple by the developer, and this might not even be the developer of the project. The ask is, will the town authorize them to basically finish the basements, get rid of some single families, and make them into duplexes? The footprint is not changing. Planning Board cannot approve more than a ten percent change, so it has to come back to town meeting. Adding all these other things, if we wanted to add those, that would be under the special permit. That's not really for the discussion for tonight. We were in favor of Article Four. Now I hope it doesn't pass, because we've created this mess. And regarding all the things that was said earlier, they were all misleading and self-serving. I never said we weren't going to move forward. We are always looking at our bylaws and the inclusionary bylaw. I was more concerned how it would tie into the 3A zoning that we have to deal with in the spring. So if somebody heard me say, well, we want to look at this, it has nothing to do with this, and I find it insulting, but not in all of you.
Thank you.
Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. My question is, was the, what we voted on, the amendment, was it within the four corners of the article? It sounds like it may not have been.
I would ask Town Council.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The moderator does have the final say on what is or is not within the scope of an article, and the amendment was accepted, so it is before the meeting.
I wouldn't shake somebody a back, David Wayne.
Hi, Rick Sparling, 263 Washington Street. And to remember, ceded to us adding amendments, this is our opportunity as citizens of the town, who aren't on various boards, to have our say. And I think it's totally appropriate for every single person here to get up and tell us what they think. Thank you.
All right, please, let's maintain decorum here. I'll come back to the front here. Richard?
Richard Robinson, 117 Mill Street. If these, if either amendment is found to be inoperable legally, squishy, are they automatically severable, or do we need yet another amendment to say that they're severable?
Richard, I'm sorry, could you repeat, please?
Yeah, the question is, if one or both amendments are found to not pass muster, will that tank this article altogether, or are they automatically severable? Do we need an amendment to say that they're severable?
So I'll have to echo some earlier comments, that this is getting complicated. So I think the full article, as approved with any amendments, will be what is approved by the meeting, and that will include approval of the amended plan as presented. There will be, I think, a period of evaluation we'll need to conduct afterwards to determine whether or not town meeting has the authority to attach some of the conditions that are proposed in the amendments, based on whether or not those are within the scope of what is, what is town meeting's role under the zoning bylaw, which is to consider approval of a plan that shows boundaries, topography, wetlands, ponds, streams, waterways within or adjacent to land, proposed location, bulk types, architectural character, and typical floor plans for buildings and structures. If there are elements of the conditions that go beyond the scope of that bylaw, then they can be considered advisory. In other words, the will of town meeting, but they won't necessarily be binding on the project as it proceeds forward, but it's something that we would need to look at.
If you can take care of the friendly amendment so that it says at the expense of the developer instead of Toll Brothers. Rick?
Rick Novak, 36 Nathan Hill Road. My question is either for town council or the planning board, I'm not sure which. And I should probably note this later in my zoning bylaw here, I'm not adept enough on 5.6. A development plan was approved. The developer has come in with a new plan. If Article Four passes tonight and the developer decides, hmm, we don't like some of these handcuffs that have been added to it, are they still allowed to go back to their old plan?
Council or the planning board? Does someone have an answer to that? Sure.
Good question, but I think the...
I want to identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Gino Calucci, former town planner. I believe that the answer would be, if this article passes, then this is the new preliminary development plan, and so this would be the one that would be in effect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there... Is there any more debate or discussion? I see someone's hand up.
Just want to make a comment... Sorry, Neil Kestner, 43 Page Farm Road. If it becomes an issue where some of the amendments to this article are going to be called into question later, you know, the addition of those amendments might sway the vote for the main original article, one way or the other for people. So if at some point later, if somebody voted yes, and then those things are stripped out, and if they were there, if they weren't there in the first place, they would have voted no, how can this article at all have any force if those amendments don't go with it completely? In other words, I think you'd have to scrap the whole article and come back to town meeting, wouldn't you? That's my question.
Would that be correct, counsel?
The motion as presented with the amendment would approve the amended preliminary development plan. Certain elements of that attached to the vote imposing additional conditions may or may not take effect as the project proceeds, but it wouldn't nullify the approval of the amendment, the preliminary, amended preliminary development plan if some of those conditions are treated as merely advisory.
Thank you. Okay. So debate is now closed, and we are voting on this amendment, not on Article Four. This is an amendment to Article Four. All right? Everybody is clear on what we're voting for? All right? Then please vote now on yes or no on this amendment. All right? Motion fails. All right. So now we have... We are back to the main motion as amended by the amendment that did pass. Mrs. Lincoln.
Mrs. Moderator. I move to reconsider the vote on not this most recent amendment, but the first amendment that we voted on.
Okay. So we have a motion to reconsider, and we have a second. And is there... So is there a discussion on that, or is that just straight? Consider is... No debate? No. Okay. So there is no debate on this, and so we are voting on the motion to reconsider the previous motion that passed. This is not a vote on that amendment. It is only a vote on whether that amendment can be reconsidered. Got it? Okay. So how... And this requires a two-thirds vote to pass, the motion to reconsider. Two-thirds. Everybody understands what we're voting on?
No.
No? Okay. I'll went through it again. Okay? There was a motion by advisory for affirmative action on Article Four. There was then an amendment put forward to Article Four, which passed, so that if that remains the case, Article Four, the original motion, will be amended to include that amendment that passed. Okay? If the mo... So now there has been a motion to reconsider the passage of that amendment. All right? We're not reconsidering the amendment itself. We are only considering whether to reconsider or not. Is... Do people have a further question that I can answer for you? Yes, please. Okay. A yes vote means that... A one or a yes means that the amendment that passed to the original article will be put to a vote again. A no vote means that the previous action stands, and that the next thing we look at is the original motion with the amendment that passed. Everybody clear now? Okay. So we are voting on the motion to reconsider. A yes vote says we'll talk about that amendment again. The a no vote says, nope, we're done talking about that. Okay? Please vote now. All right. So that motion to reconsider passes. So the... The motion... I'm sorry, wait. Oh, two-thirds, right. Sorry. Yes. Yes, it does not pass because that needed to be a two-thirds vote. My apologies. Forgot that. So the motion will not be reconsidered. And so now we're moving to vote on Article Four as amended. And that... Can I read what it would... Just so that... Or maybe Ron can put it up there. That would be most helpful, I think. That's not... That's the original. So it would then read, "on condition that..." Right? Would that be legal language to add to the previous motion? So it would just say, "on condition that the requirement to extend public water," et cetera? Condition under requirement. Okay. So can you add that text to the whole... Maybe it'll have to get the size... The font will have to get smaller. So if you could get it on one screen, that would be great. Robert, there's no further discussion on this? Thank you. All right. So this is the motion on the floor now. It is the original motion proposed by advisory as amended by the amendment. This is a majority vote? Yes? All right. Are we ready, Ron? Can we... Yep, just wait. Yep. We're just going to pull up the voting slide now. Okay. So please vote now. Okay. So Article Four as amended passes, 187 to 75. Article Five, North Sherburne Water and Sewer District. And we're changing in Chinese here. And so that you all know who this is, this is Tom Mullin, and he is special counsel for this article. I believe that Mr. Sickel has some brief comments with respect to Article Five for making his motion. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Moderator. As I noted in earlier comments, the advisory committee supports all the articles before town meeting, including Article Five. You'll have seen, careful readers of the report, advisory report, will have seen that the vote in favor was six to two, and that vote was based on information available at the time of the September 27th public hearing. And at that hearing, a number of concerns were raised by advisory members as well as public participants, and the specifics of the proposal for the Water and Sewer District were modified in response to those concerns, as reflected in the text that is currently posted on the town's website. At a subsequent advisory committee meeting on October 4th, the two members who had initially voted against Article Five indicated that they would now support the article given the changes that had been made. So accordingly, all the advisory members who voted on this article supported it in its current form, the form that was distributed and available to everyone here at the meeting and also as posted on the town's website. So I just wanted to clarify that since there might have been a little confusion about where advisory stood on that article. Thanks.
Thanks. So if you would like to make your motion now?
Thank you. So I move favorable action, and that the town authorize the select board to file a petition with the general court to obtain special legislation to establish the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District with the changes reflected in the handout relevant to this article as approved by the select board and filed with the town clerk. Such petition to include such other additional provisions as the select board deems appropriate, provided that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the select board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the general court. The select board being hereby authorized to approve amendments, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition.
Second. We have a presentation on Article Five by Marion Noytre.
Marion Noytre, Select Board. The overarching goal of this article is to enable two housing projects on Coolidge Street. Go down to the first slide, please.
Yes. We need to switch. And while we're switching, how did the select board vote on this?
The board voted four to zero in favor of this article on personalizing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. The five minutes starts now, right?
Yes. Okay. Five minutes starts now.
The goal of this article is to enable the two housing projects that you've been hearing about that have already been approved by the town, and they were approved first because together they add 120 affordable units to our state affordable housing inventory, and that is more than enough to fulfill our 10% affordable housing requirement. In fact, it fulfills it through 2030. So second, they were approved because of the proximity to Framingham, where we can get clean MWRI water and sewer. And indeed, Framingham has agreed to provide it, and an intermunicipal agreement, or IMA, is being negotiated. So you've heard why we bring this all now. Toll Brothers is very interested in building these projects. They haven't decided, but they're willing to establish, to install, the entire water and sewer connection down Kendall and Coolidge, and that's very expensive, at no cost to Sherburne. But to bring Framingham water and sewer into Sherburne, we have to create a water and sewer district, and that requires legislation by the state. And to submit legislation to the state, the select board has to have town meeting approval. So here we are. A working group led by the town council and with our special counsel, Tom Mullin, who's here, drafted the legislation. And of course, in the next slide, you'll see any water district has to have boundaries. And the boundaries, of course, include the two developments. The developer is paying for the main bond, and they also include properties on Kendall that already get their water from Framingham. So we know this entire area is concerned about contamination from general chemical. It's just over the line in Framingham. So properties along the main lines and Meadowbrook are included in the district, so they have the option to be connected in the future. But it's important to remember, oh, I should say, on the other hand, people are very concerned about overdevelopment. We get water pipes in this area. But any development still means all the approvals by town boards and boards. Importantly, the amount of water that we're going to get from Framingham is limited. It's limited by part what Framingham will make available to us, and part through the cost of installation and the Framingham improvements that the developer has agreed to pay for. So we don't know yet what the total will be, but if some future project needs more water than we have, we have to negotiate a new IMA, and that has to come down to town meeting, so you'll know all about it. The legislation sets the ground rules for how this water will be allocated within the district. And it's already agreed that the total capacity will be enough for the current needs of homes in the district and some extra formal additions, like a bedroom, accessory apartment. That will be held in reserve, calling it reserve capacity. We anticipate there will probably be a little extra, we're calling excess capacity, for future changes in the area. And if a project can be built within that excess capacity, the district has to approve it. But if there's not enough capacity, the IMA has to be renegotiated, as I said, and that comes back to town meeting. So property owners will have to pay the cost of connections to their homes. So property owners will have to pay the cost of connections to their homes. And as far as Meadowbrook Road goes, who is going to pay for that is not yet decided. It's not part of this article. The North Sherburne Water and Sewer District then in sum establishes the district as a legal entity. It sets the boundaries, tells how water and sewer will be allocated, and provides for governance and oversight. It's not owned by the town. It's owned by the district, and the district commission is the government's. Three members on the commission will always be appointed by the town and the two others from the biggest users, usually the developments in the region. So the town maintains oversight. So the main points to bear in mind in my five minutes are, first, that having this water and sewer district doesn't guarantee that these projects will be built. It's just a prerequisite, so first step. The developer will pay for the main lines and then will transfer ownership to the district at no cost to the town or the district. So a yes vote on Article 5 in sum opens the opportunity with these developments for Sherburne to have 10% affordable housing. And it guarantees a clean water source in the future for this area of town, including the people on Meadowbrook. And I'll stop there. Any take questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for comments?
Hi there, Sarah Wiley, 94 Coolidge Street. And we appreciate the time and thought that has gone into this. I'm wondering what happens and who's responsible if something breaks down in the system? So if there's a sewer leak, if there's a water mains leak, how is that covered? I'm also wondering how residents of Coolidge Street and Meadowbrook were represented in the planning stages here? Was anybody from those R streets on the advisory board that looked at this project? If you can answer those two things, that'd be great.
All right. Actually, I think no one from Meadowbrook or Coolidge was on the working group. But I did organize information sessions with them. Tried to organize some more, but they weren't able to put that together. So there were public meetings on this all along. And those public meetings were on Zoom. They were open to everybody. So I think we did our best to try to make it transparent. What was the next?
Repairs.
Oh, repairs, sorry, that was the big question. Well, like any water and sewer district anywhere in Massachusetts, the district is its own business, in a sense. So any repairs are funded by the district. And of course, the water and sewer fees are paid by the users, like in any town that has municipal water and sewer. And repairs are only paid by those who are using the water and sewer. And of course, there's always a little extra added to that for a maintenance fund. Maybe people who have had water, municipal water and sewer can talk more about that.
Thank you, Marian Nortre.
Richard, this is 117 Mill Street. This may sound like a tangential point, forgive me. It's clear that the town doesn't own the pipes and whatnot that are going to be involved in here and that the district itself does. It's a legal entity. The commission makes decisions about what the district does. Who gets to make money if they decide to just sell the whole thing? I mean, it's just not clear to me legally what happens when you fold the corporation and just say goodbye. Who's his? And why isn't, is this written so that it devolves to the town in that event?
I think I'd like to ask our town council or town administrator about that.
Hi, I'm Tom Mullin. I'm the special counsel for this purpose, because your town council had a conflict having previously represented Framingham. I think the answer is that this commission, this district is going to be run by a commission that will be three fifths appointed by town government. That is, by two, by your supportive selectmen, and one by the water commissioners. So there will be de facto control over the decisions of the district. We don't have to worry about a corporation going rogue and selling this out from under you. Does that answer your question?
Yes and no. I mean, yes, if, you know, in perpetuity, three members of the town are always focused on the best interest of the town, of course. I was just wondering what happens if that's not true? And sometimes things like that happen. As I say, I don't want to take up the town meeting time. I just, I don't quite understand, when there are athletes involved, who gets to decide what happens to them in the law?
Also, let me just add this, that as a matter of law, we are not setting up here a corporation. We are setting up a body politic. It's a district like any of the other, probably hundreds of districts that exist throughout the Commonwealth. And they cannot operate the same way as a corporation can for their own private gain.
Next?
1677, just a question. I saw on the drawing that says 120 units, 25 of them are affordable. So does that, 25%, which means 30 units, does that satisfy the state's law regarding affordable units for the entire town?
Yes, it does. But the state counts on 120 units, if they are rentals, as affordable, because the 40B law is designed to provide not only truly affordable units, but also units that are less than the usual market rate. So these are apartments. When it's an apartment complex, the state provides, the state counts all the apartments on the affordable inventory. And that's good for Sherburne, because, you know, there are many people, there are people who may work in Sherburne or want to live in Sherburne, who can't afford a single-family home, but they could afford an apartment.
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, Jack, you were.
Jack Mulhouse, 48 Rootwood Street. How far does the responsibility of this entity extend? There will be pipes continuing from Framingham into Sherburne and to the development property. Is it the responsibility of this organization to take it all the way to one point in Framingham? Should the pipe fail or something, and repairs or additions needed?
Are you asking if it extends into Framingham? I'm sorry.
Where does this entity begin its responsibility for the pipe?
At the Sherburne-Framingham border.
Border. So pipes coming in beyond that border line is the town and Sherburne responsibility? Or is it the entity, this district, sewer district entity?
It's the district's responsibility. There would be a best remit at the town border.
At the border. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, I have a couple of, Sarah Wiley, 94 Coolidge, again. Couple of follow-up questions. Did you do an economic analysis to assess how much money would be coming in from ratepayers in the district and the costs of repairs for something like a sewage leak or a water mains explosion? Two, did you consider running that pipe down the length of Coolidge Street rather than looping back around? And three, I can't remember what three was, give me a second. If you could answer the other two, I'll remember the third one.
No, we didn't have to do such an analysis.
Okay, then how are you assured that it will be fiscally sound?
Well, it is fiscally sound because the users of the district will be supporting it.
I know, but it'll only be fiscally sound if the users are paying enough money to cover the costs.
Oh, yes, absolutely. That's true of any municipal water resources.
So how will we ensure, then, that we have affordable rates for our low-income renters and residents?
Yeah, affordable rates can be set. I think, Jeremy, can you address that? Are you familiar with rates in water districts elsewhere? And whether there's an affordable rate, affordable level?
Yes, Jeremy Marsette, Town Administrator. The special legislation does require that one of the first duties of the commission is to do an analysis, a financial analysis, to set their initial water rates. These sorts of utilities do not run on a profit. However, they need to have revenues to directly offset their expenses. So the water rates would need to be set by the commission annually through a public hearing, such that they're raising enough revenue to cover their expenses.
As for special rates for low-income residents, I believe there are such arrangements at the state or other towns.
There are programs through the MWRA and the Commonwealth that will help water utilities to provide affordable rates for customers.
That's sort of beyond the reach of this article, sorry. But it's a good question. Thank you.
Let's go back again.
Thank you. Neil Gessler, 43 Page Farm Road. Two things. One is, I just wanted to address the use of the term safe harbor, because it's been used in the materials. Safe harbor is not 10%. 10% is the state quota for the town ultimately. Safe harbor can be achieved in a number of ways. One of them is to do half a percent, which gives you safe harbor for 12 months. So in theory, if you started at 0%, you could spend 20 years building projects and deny any 40B you didn't want. But the town's already decided to do it this way, which is all at once. And there's merit to that, concentrating it in one place. And I think just what came up with the previous article is the thing I would say again, which is, I don't like the idea of creating a district like this without guarantees for the residents in Meadowbrook and other streets there, where that infrastructure is not going to be paid for, not by then, but by the town. And I would just urge the town to support paying for that or the district paying for those connections all the way out to the house. Thank you.
Yeah, Neil, I'd like to respond to that when we get to the amendment, because there is an amendment to that effect. But could we go to the next slide regarding, could we have the next slide? Yes, thanks. Regarding how we get to 10% or how long it takes, Neil is absolutely right. If you're not in safe harbor, or you can be in safe harbor temporarily by adding a few units a year. But let me just show you how that plays out in town. This looks like a lot of math, but it's actually just simple arithmetic. In the top box, you can see where we now stand. We have 1,570 houses in Sherburne. So our 40B requirement right now is 157 affordable units. We only have 48. So that's just over 3%. To get into, it's, you're right, we don't have to, to get, I should have said, to get into safe harbor until 2030, I should have written, we need 109 more. With the Coolidge Street developments, in the second box, you can see that we'll add 130 affordable units, which brings our total to 178. And right away, that's over 10%. So, but it adds, of course, 187 new homes. So our total census at 2030 will be 1,757 homes. And our new 40B requirement will be 176 units. But look, with this alone, we're already over the goal in 2030. So then we're okay till 2040. Of course, granted, this is assuming no other developments are built. But then let's look at the alternative strategy of just adding a few to kind of stay temporarily in safe harbor. That's the third box. Say we add multiple small ownership 40Bs. I put an example up there, like 59 North Main, which is a perfectly fine development. It's a 40B, 12 houses. Only 3% of them are affordable, and only 3% count because they're ownership. So how many 59 North Maines would we have to have built in town to get to 10%? Well, at least 36. That's a lot of development. So it's not just about staying in safe harbor. It's about protecting the land and the forest and all the other space that we have in Sherburne. So say we did it that way, though, and added all those small developments. At 2030, we would have, let's see, that's 432 new homes. That puts us over 2,000. So our new 40B requirement is 200. And then, this is assuming that nothing else is added, we would be back down at 7.8%. So it's very hard to ever get to 10% by that route. And during, in that route also, of course, we're adding a lot of ownership homes, single-family homes. We're adding a lot more kids to the schools. Nothing against kids in the schools, but that is a lot more burden on town taxpayers. So it's just something else to consider. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Allison Mitchell, I A. Kaulier, and I live at 121 Coolidge Street. I'm glad people have brought up safe harbor language and some of the comments that were just made. I think if we step back and just take a breath, that might be helpful. I feel like some of this is being driven by fear. And the safe harbor language, I feel, carries with it an implicit bias. I think that our town is uniquely situated in that we are in close proximity to Boston, but we are unique in our well water. I'm curious to know how many municipalities within the Commonwealth rely almost 100% on well water and what those municipalities are doing to comply with the 40B state regulations. Has that been something that the committee has looked at?
Certainly, the planning board has been looking at that for a long time. And maybe Geno or the planning board could comment on that if you have any data. There certainly are other towns that are struggling with this, because they only have water and sewer. And of course, another important feature of the development that we want to get a water and sewer district for is that it gets us to 40B without impacting, without drawing on Sherburne water. You'll recall that before the Water and Sewer District was even a possibility, that original Meadowbrook Commons EA development was going to be on wells and septic. And even the DEP, Department of Environmental Protection of Massachusetts, worried that putting in a lot of wells up there would draw the plume from general chemical into that area of Sherburne. And of course, it required a huge septic system. So one of the reasons that we're trying to get a water and sewer district here is that we have an opportunity to get water from Framingham without compromising the water or the groundwater in that part of town.
Thank you. Someone back has commented.
Yeah, Matt Vitale, recovering chair of the Sherburne Board of Health. Thankfully, I did my six years of service, where I had an opportunity to consider many of these issues with a much smaller audience, although Dover Sherburne cable television was always a delight. I think the comment I would make is 40B means that it doesn't matter. 40B means that it reverts to the state regulations. We had an opportunity to consider many of these projects. We felt, at least for myself personally, a deep sense of relief when a strategy based on municipal water and sewer was pursued. I think the point that Marian raised is perfect, which is if you pull tens of thousands of gallons out of the ground from wells, which is the alternative to a project such as this, you're going to either pull and plume, or the next conversation we'll have is, gosh, I'm really worried about my well going dry. The challenge we have is that as long as we are not in a position where we've satisfied the state's requirement for affordable housing, we're not in a position to create regulations that are tailored to individual circumstance. We're not able to base our development on the plans that have been thoughtfully considered by your community members. And so for me, having seen lots of projects where people had really strong feelings that planning was terrible, and then Plan B came, and they're like, oh my God, that was so much worse. I would really encourage us to take this opportunity to take the win when we can get it and to vote yes. it, and to vote yes on this proposal.
Neil?
Neil, I'm first from Gray Rock Road. So, I look at the plan, and I see that there is a dead-end water system here. Has anyone considered making this a looped system, which is significantly advantageous, although it would be more costly for the initial implementation?
That's a good point. And I'm not a civil engineer, so I drew this water system as a blue marker down Kendall and Coolidge, just to show the route that is taken from Framingham. And then, I drew it into the developments. That has no bearing development, and River Peaks will actually go.
Okay. August? August? Yes, aren't you August?
My turn?
Yes.
Yes, hi, again. Jean Wittenmeyer, 25th.
Oh, Jean, sorry.
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion for Article 5. I provided before, and it's the identical motion, but I'll read it now. This Article 5...
Jean, why don't we let Ron put it up while we're reading it?
Because two minutes goes by.
Well, we'll stop the clock. It's ready? Okay.
I watch a lot of football.
So, if we can switch back from up there to down here. Okay, your two minutes starts now.
This Article 5 is conditioned on the requirement to extend public water and sewer access down Meadowbrook Road for all Meadowbrook Road residents at the same time as the installation of the public water and sewer pipe down Coolidge Street for the Meadowbrook Commons and Coolidge Crossing projects at the expense of the developer. I think it's important to revisit this again in the context of Article 5, because I think it was unclear about the interplay between Article 4 and Article 5, whether Article 4 amendment becomes advisory. And as Marion said, it's not clear who pays for the residents with Article 5 as drafted. And the way this actually works without this amendment is that only if 50, as I understand it, only if more than 50% of Meadowbrook residents agree, then there, we have to pay for this public pipe coming down Meadowbrook. But more than half the people, there's 12 houses, so seven people have to agree. And if the other five don't want it, they still have to pay 1/12 equal of whatever this public water project costs. So, again, thank you for your support. Thank you so, so, so much. And we're hoping you'll help us again in a small way in this context of this. Thank you.
Do we have a second for this amendment?
Second.
And that is, who seconded? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Madam Moderator, may I comment on the amendment?
Yes, just one second. Okay.
Okay. Regarding the amendment.
Can I offer a friendly amendment to the amendment?
Is this the same one to take over?
Well, I didn't bring it up for the last one, because for the last one, we've...
Well, I'm sorry, there's been a second. So, now, if council can advise me on this, but prior, when we took the friendly amendment, there had not been a second, so...
There was no space called to offer any amendments to the amendments.
I'm sorry?
There was no space called to offer an amendment to an amendment, so it just immediately went to a second, that's what I'm trying to say, so I didn't get a chance to offer the amendment.
Right, I understand that. She just kind of lucked out the first time, so...
So, as I understand it, there can be up to two amendments at a time before town meeting. So, there is one amendment now, and anyone who wishes to would be free to make a second amendment to the amendment, if that's what's being proposed here.
Okay, so, but because there's been a second, even though it's a friendly amendment, but I, council told me that because there was no second previously, we didn't have to vote on amending the amendment.
Perhaps the person who seconded would be willing to withdraw the second?
Would that be possible? Okay, so now, if you would like to make your friendly amendment, we're happy to hear it.
Thank you so much. I didn't offer this last time because we were specifically discussing Meadowbrook Road, but since this sewer district would also encompass Coolidge Crossing, which is further down Coolidge Street, the proposal would be to add Coolidge Street to this list so that both Meadowbrook and Coolidge Street would be covered by this amendment. Does that make sense? I can explain it if you'd pull up.
I think everyone is seeing the words Coolidge Street there.
But it says the requirement to extend public water and sewer access down Meadowbrook Road and Coolidge Street for all Meadowbrook and Coolidge Road residents at the same time as the amendment I'm offering.
Could you, you... Could you repeat that?
Sure, just add, after the first mention of Meadowbrook Road and Coolidge Street, and after the second mention of Meadowbrook Road and Coolidge Street.
Okay, Ron is putting it in so that everybody can see it. I think that would make things clearer. All right, so, is this what you wanted to say, the requirement?
It is, thank you.
Okay, so, okay, wait. So, this is now a friendly amendment before it can, yes, Mr. Durances?
Just speaking as a word for a clarifying amendment to this?
Sure, it hasn't been seconded, so, sure.
Coolidge Street is a very long street. You mean within the district. So, could you add those words, within the district?
All right, if Ron can put that in, thanks, Paul.
Sorry.
In both instances, correct, Paul? In both instances? In both instances, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Wait, no, wait, don't say... Okay, this is the amendment that has been made, is... Is that what you wanted to say, at the same time? Was that part of your amendment? The, Jean, your original amendment has at the same time, and it, okay, so, Ron needs to add that. Just, this is time-consuming, but I think it's worth it so that everyone understands exactly what they're voting on. Yes.
I need to add that the actual amendment that was filed by the town clerk said that the installation of pipe down Coolidge Street would be at the expense of the developer and the town. And apparently, the town and developer would negotiate who's going to pay what.
That's not under discussion right now.
The town is included in the funding.
No, that's not what we're talking about right now. What we're talking about is the original motion as proposed by advisory, but this is an amendment that has been offered. And someone is saying that the words "at the same time" is the installation of public water and sewer. And is someone saying that "at the same time" should be somewhere else? I'm not sure what you're actually asking. Tom?
Madam Moderator, just two points. First, I think the word "time" was used orally, both in the motion here and previously on Article 4. It just didn't make its way into the slide. So, "at the same time" was what the speaker said. Second, I guess I'm going to ask a question or pose an objection about the geography here. As I understand it, these pipes would go from, through the district on Coolidge Street, starting at the Framingham line and ending at the southern moor of the two new Toll Brothers, presumably, projects. So, that's the entirety of Coolidge Street within what we've been calling the district. So, what are we accomplishing by adding Coolidge Street in two places here? I know it's not the entirety of Coolidge Street, but it's the entirety of Coolidge Street within the district.
I don't think that's correct. So, there is a portion of Coolidge Street that comes before Meadowbrook splits off, and there's a portion of Coolidge Street after Meadowbrook. In the drawing that we've seen, the pipe goes back along Meadowbrook and doesn't, yeah. And this was written just to cover Meadowbrook, not the houses on Coolidge Street, which is why I...
Yeah, I understand. I think it's confusion created by my blue marker drawing, which was not at all official. I think the intention is to make water and sewer potentially available to everyone in the district. And that's how the, that's how the legislation is written.
All right, so, before we can have comments and questions about this amendment, the amendment needs to be seconded. All right, so, this is the amendment that we are now talking about. All right, are there, this has, we are not debating or voting right now on the original main motion to Article 5. We are only debating and voting on this amendment. All right, so, if people have comments on this amendment, please speak up. I'll start with you, Frank.
Frank has South Beam Street. If we look at, we're very easily adding cost to the expense of the developer, which is voting and saying, you're going to pay for this, you're going to pay for that. So, we have to think, would this then be viable for the developer? And the other question is, if it is viable for the developer, they're going to be adding on the caution units. So, it means the people who buy those units will be paying for all this extra stuff, all these connections you're talking about. So, that's one thing to think about. It might make it unpalatable for the developer.
Thank you. Marion?
I also want to comment on the amendment and the amendment to the amendment. I don't know, it's switched at this point, but the amendment filed...
This is the amendment that's on the floor right now.
Okay, good. So, the, this is the amendment that was filed with town clerk?
Yes. A friendly amendment to that.
To that.
Right.
Okay, fine. In either case, where it stands now with the friendly amendment at all, it's not the same as was originally amended. The original amendment proposed at the expense of the developer and the town, with the understanding, it says, to be, as allocated by agreement among them. So, the cost of this was to be somehow shared between the developer and the town. I just wanted to make sure that the language is correct.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify this, is I am the author of both versions of those, and I'm a gracious editor even of myself. And the version that was presented tonight to town clerk and town meeting was an edited version from the Christie copy that I circulated on the guest speaker room. So, this is the one. It's at the expense of the developer. There's no expense to the town in the same...
Thanks for that clarification.
All right, I want to go back first. Rick?
Rick Newback, 36 Nathan Hill Road. If I understand the amendments correctly, cumulative amendments correctly, they expand the district, or at least the homes getting water. And I wanted to know, in all the years of discussion with Framingham, has there been a discussion of this amount of water? Have we negotiated for it, or are we just saying, well, it's free and it's unlimited?
Mary Ann, you can answer that question.
All right, the negotiations have been made between our town administrator, who is present, and he's a civil engineer, and Framingham, and of course, Toll Brothers, they're paying for it. And I've been present at some of those. And yes, as far as I know, Framingham is willing to provide enough water to cover the current needs of the district, as you saw drawn on the map.
Richard?
Thank you. Richard Robinson. Obviously, there are...
I'm sorry, I think there may have been a mistake. That wasn't my question. My question was, has Framingham agreed to give the amount of water in the amendment, which is, I think, different than what you proposed?
I'm sorry, the amount in the amendment, I assume, is water to everyone in the district who is entitled to it at their current level of water use.
Including all of Meadowbrook and all the houses in Coolidge?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, that's the reserve capacity.
Okay, Richard, go ahead.
Thank you. There are obviously houses now in the district that already have their own water and septic. In my very cursory reading of this 19-page legislation, are there provisions that prevent those people from ever being charged for anything, even though they live within the district? Or if they have the option, are they going to get paid even if they don't exercise the option? Are they going to get charged even if they don't exercise the option?
My understanding is, is no, they would not be charged. Within the district, people are charged according to their use of the water. Every home or building would have a water meter, just like any municipal system.
Good evening, Peter Morris, 45 Old Orchard Road. Without getting into the merits of the amendment, I really just have a point of order and that inquiry. The discussion on Article 4 was whether or not this amendment would be within the sort of four corners of the original warrant. And I'm not sure if these types of conditions, and so, what has been proposed is creating a new water district and the state legislation. And I just don't know if, again, the sort of the town meeting might be acting sort of alterveres, which basically means that this is outside the scope of the warrant. And I think that the last town council said it was up to the moderator. So, I just would want some sort of actual determination. Is this within the scope of the original warrant? And I'm not sure if town council can speak to that, but this sort of seems like it's outside. Without getting into the merits, it just seems like it's outside of all these conditions on the original warrant.
Right, I had actually talked with town council, actually, Tom, prior to this, and I'll tell, he can tell you what he told me.
Yeah, I certainly agree with your town council's advice that this is matter that's up to the moderator's discretion. For what it's worth, my advice would be that this amendment is within the four corners of the article. Basically, Sherburne is saying, if they adopt this amendment and then pass the article, yes, we like the idea of this special legislation, but we've got a couple of conditions. And we insist that they be met if we're going to adopt, if we're going to ask the legislature to adopt this new act.
to adopt this new act.
I agree with that. I think it is worth talking about tonight. And certainly, we all worry about our well water when there's nearby construction. We've seen that the increase in footprint has not changed. And of course, we don't know how much bedrock might be disrupted or whether there will be well water impact. But my point is that the amendment demands a guarantee of installation of MWA water and sewer lines on Meadowbrook Road up front, at no expense... This is the main line. At no expense to Meadowbrook residents, paid by the developer. And without that guarantee, they'll vote no on both Articles 4, and they've already done that, and Article 5. But I think we need to be more clear about what Article 5 actually says. It simply establishes a water and sewer district and describes how it will be governed. It makes the installation of water and sewer from Framingham into Sherburne possible. That's all it does. And it leaves perfectly wide open a future extension on Meadowbrook, how it might be paid for. It doesn't rule out negotiating contributions from the town or state grants to help defray the costs on Meadowbrook Road. I think there would be a lot of sympathy for that. But such negotiations obviously aren't going to happen tonight. So if the amendment passes, Article 5 is not going to pass. And we won't have another Chatham out of water sewer district for a very long time, if ever. So if the town isn't willing to take this first step and create a district, it's certain the current developer will pull out. There's no way they're going to put up $12 million. Or after all the millions they're spending on the main line, or even extend it to more people. So then what? Well, the apartment Coolidge Crossing project won't happen. So we'll be open to more 40B projects all over town. And if that's okay with you, then that's the way it'll be. And the original Meadowbrook Commons EA preliminary plan that we talked about under Article 4, you know, was with multiple wells and a big septic system. So if there's no district and no negotiation to bring in water at no expense to the town, then another developer could still pursue that option of Meadowbrook Commons or something like it, because the zoning still stands at elderly affordable. And that's four units per acre, counting all the acreages of the parcel. So it can be very dense housing. And then you've just got to consider that if contamination from general chemical or from the native landfill or more PFAS shows up in Meadowbrook Road wells, there won't be any alternative for Meadowbrook Road residents or anyone else in the area. So yeah, that's why I recommend voting no on this amendment and voting yes on Article 5. Sean?
I can't possibly touch what she just said. I had a couple of comments, and she... That was beautifully done. I would urge everyone to vote no, and then we're going to reconsider Article 4 after this.
And would you introduce yourself, please? Because hardly anyone knows who you are.
That was Sean Cooley. I don't know if his address... Elizabeth Wandoa, 124 Boxo Brook. I was going to try to say much less eloquently what Mary Ann just said beautifully. I just want to say in support of what she said. I'm associate member of the planning board. I've been listening to conversations about this project and affordable housing in general for the last three years. This is a win for the town, and it will, in my view, protect us from further risks to our water. And I would also advocate for voting no and then yes on this.
George?
George Moore, 11 Whitney Drive, and former member of the select board that was very involved with this project. And I just want to agree with everything Mary Ann said, that we really should vote no on this amendment. We struggled to get... We had a developer, a developer backed out. This is another developer that we now have interested in doing this. And I think what's very important is remember the chart split up there that said, we could have 36 12-unit developments. And I don't think anybody really wants that around town. And this is our solution to get to our 10% and protect town forests and open lands that we have. So vote no on this amendment, so we can keep the developer in hand and move this forward that we've been trying to do since 2017. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Up back, we have a comment.
Hi, Holrich, 28 Meadowbrook. I have a question on the comment you just made on this amendment. You keep saying that the cost down the Meadowbrook is up for further discussion, but on the motion, you said that all the cost will be paid by the developer. So I'm just curious why the cost for the two parts are different? Why can't we talk about cost on one side and start in the town, all about developers, but not on Meadowbrook's side? Can you just explain that? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure I totally understood the question, but I have to say, we don't know precisely how much a pipe down Meadowbrook would cost. And I would say that it would be a wiser decision if we want to get these projects built, and that's for you to decide. If we want a water district so they can be built safely and so that part of town is safe, that's for you to decide too. But as far as the funding of the pipe down Meadowbrook, without this amendment, we still have pie open how that could be funded. It could be grants put in later to the state. It would be a perfect subject for a state mass works grant. But we know that that can't be done right now. And the developer is making their decision in the next month. So we have to decide if we're willing to take what the developer is willing to provide and then work from there to get water to Meadowbrook or wherever else, or not. Okay. Thank you. I'm going next over to this here.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. Allison Mitchell, IE Collier, 121 Coolidge Street. I think I hear a lot of speculation in this discussion, and I'm concerned that we're making a very serious decision that affects not just... I mean, I think a lot of people don't live on Coolidge Street and Meadowbrook Road who are here. We're not a lot of people. But the decision that's before us this evening about this water and sewer district has impact on the entire town. And I think that we need to have a little bit more like granular data, not this like, "Oh, we're not sure how much this is going to cost. We don't think it's going to affect basements." I don't feel like that's a sufficient ground on which we should be voting. And I think it would be helpful if we could not establish the water and sewer district at this time until we have some more of this information available to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going over here. You were next. Joanne Candela, 6 Nathan Hill Road. I'm sorry, I'm calling on this gentleman here.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right.
Yes, Brian. Brian Blue, 215 South Main Street. Good evening. My name is Brian Blue, and I'm here representing the Sherburne Affordable Housing Trust, which along with the Sherburne Planning Board is responsible for the implementation of the housing production plan initially adopted in June of 2017. It is our mission to ensure that affordable housing units are included within every proposed development to achieve 10% or greater affordable housing stock in town to comply with the Commonwealth's 40B laws. We strongly endorse the creation of the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District, as without this, we will be unable to achieve, and I'm using the definition up there, safe harbor requirement of 10% based upon the pace of development of smaller parcels in town. The development of Meadowbrook and Coolidge parcels as proposed by the developers will ensure that we're in compliance with the safe harbor figure of 10% affordable through at least 2030, and will provide more diverse housing options, a major goal of Sherburne's master plan and housing production plan. Based upon the analysis undertaken, these projects will have a minimal impact on Pine Hill's small enrollment figures and will actually generate perpetual tax revenue for the town of Sherburne versus the rumored increase in taxes to existing residents. The only way that these developments remain feasible is if there's access to public water and sewer, the cost of which will be solely borne by the developer and the newly created water and sewer district, which will also have access to state and other funding sources to defray costs. There are towns in Massachusetts that have been forced to sell off public lands for housing development because the pace of affordable unit production with smaller projects did not allow them to achieve the safe harbor figure, something none of us want to see. The development plans for both Meadowbrook and Coolidge parcels are extremely well thought out. Voting yes for the proposed water and sewer district is the only reasonable avenue to avoid noncompliance with the Commonwealth's 40B laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Joanne Candela, 6 Meadowbrook Road in Sherburne. You got... You're afraid that by adding all this cost of the pipe going down Meadowbrook Road... Well, think about the 12 houses. If they have to pay for the cost, they're going to have to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars. And they changed this from last time. They have basements now in part of the project, and the basements are what's going to cause our wells to probably go bare.
Thank you. Sure, if you want to respond. I have somebody else up here waiting. It's... Sure. If you can respond to that last one. Yeah, first of all, there were always basements in that plan. In the preliminary plan back in 2017, there were basements. They just weren't finished. Right.
It was hundreds of thousands of dollars to be...
Of course. And one thing that I want to really drive home about Article 5 is, it leaves wide open different possibilities for funding of a pipe down Meadowbrook Road. I understand that you're afraid of that expense, even if it's spread out over time, whatever. But we can explore that, you know, with grants from the state or whatever. We're getting into a back and forth here that is not productive. There were two individuals up back who have been waiting and have not spoken, so if you would, please.
Thank you. Tom Trainer, 97 Washington Street. I just thought I'd bring up a couple items people haven't really addressed. And I think it's great we're having this discussion. And I think it's way long overdue thinking about this the last couple of weeks. I looked up Massachusetts Chapter 40B. I hope people realize that that law was passed to encourage towns to get to the 10% affordable when I was a sophomore in high school in 1969. So it's... I'm embarrassed that we have a town that not gotten to that 10% level. So I'm definitely in favor of saying no to this amendment, not scaring away the fourth developer that's been in conversations with the town over the last seven or eight years on that. And I also wanted to add, and I hope people are aware of it, now that we're not in safe harbor right now, and I lose track, you know, I only have so many fingers in my hand, but I think we have like five or six 40B applications right now in front of our zoning board of appeals, in front of our select board in different stages, and they're all scattered all over town. And if they're purchased 40Bs, our conservation commission, our board of health has very little say in how they're designed and installed. It's really going to be a risk to our water supply. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And I really recommend saying no to this amendment and passing more than Article 5.
Thank you. And the other individual there is Sarah Raggy, 39 Green Lane. And I would like to ask to move the question. All right. All right. There is no debate on that, on moving the question, but there must be a second.
Second!
To move the question is a two-thirds vote. So if Ron would make a slide for that, it would be great. Remember, you're not voting on the amendment right now. All you're voting on is the end of the discussion and a vote on the amendment. All right. So please vote now. A yes vote ends discussion. A no vote says, "I'd like discussion to continue." All right. Question is moved. There's no more discussion, and we are voting on the... If you'd want, that'd be great if you could put that back up there for a minute. Now that I've had my question answered, we can vote. So please vote now on this amendment. Amendment fails. All right. So we are now back to voting on Article 5. And Ron, if you can put that up, that would be great. This is the main motion. Discussion continues to be open on the main motion. So Rick?
Rick Novak, 36 Nathan Hill Road, also on the zoning board of appeals. Since 2015, we have the statutory duty, exquisite pleasure and distinct honor of administering the 40B statute. And for all the things everybody's weighed tonight, I think there are two things you should not weigh. One is, and I think Mary Ann put this to bed, but just in case anybody has any lingering concept, there is no other way out of the SHI cap. There is no inch your way ahead, bad one half. This is the best route out, if you want that route out. Otherwise, we could have the 40Bs around town, and that is not the end of the world. It's a lot of difficult work for us in the ZBA, and not everybody likes the projects. But that is the other choice. The other thing I think you should disregard is, I heard it said that trying to comply with the statute was implicit bias, and that does not add up at all. The whole point of this statute is to try to make more housing available to more diverse people within our citizenship. So do not vote against Article 5 because it's implicit bias. Thank you.
Over here.
Allison Mitchell, IE Collier, 121 Coolidge Street. I wanted to clarify, I think the language around safe harbor itself has implicit bias in it. I'm not saying that Article 5 is somehow has implicit bias. I think that it's really important... I grew up here. The entire time that I've lived in the United States, oh, sorry, in Massachusetts, I've lived in Sherburne. I grew up... I was Pine Hill School through the high school. I'm really thankful for my life and my roots here. I think that Sherburne should be more diverse in a number of ways, in a diverse definition of diversity. What I'm concerned about is a little bit of Robert's Rules of Order about why BS residents are always answering back and forth to a member who is in favor of the water and sewer district. It feels a bit lopsided. And also, I think, I had an additional question about when this proposed legislation was made available to the public. Was this already posted on the website? And if so, when? I just... I know some of us have not seen this before this evening, so that's why I'm wondering. Thank you.
Yeah, it's been posted on the website for quite a while, actually. Earlier versions were...
Earlier versions were posted, then as they were revised, were revised, later versions were posted. It's been available on the website. The, uh, information on it, a four-page thing on explaining it, has been on the website for, oh, many weeks, I don't know how long. So the information has been out there.
The legislation is not working out.
Right, the legislation has been on the website for, I don't remember exactly when it was first posted.
October 6th, I believe?
That was the final version, it was posted, um, October 6th, but, uh...
I, I think you've answered the question, that it is posted on the website. Bob?
Sure, Bob Richardson, Lake Street. Um, just two quick comments, I think I know where this vote is going, uh, so I won't take too much of your time. The first is, there's been a lot of, this is a, a night about a silver bullet, and, um, this proposal is a silver bullet to get to Safe Harbor. It's being said out loud tonight. Um, and I guess what I would say about that, as the person kind of who's on the other side of this debate, right? I am out there trying to build small, affordable housing communities, which are spread throughout our community, and that's what our housing production plan and our general plan, by, so eloquently by Marion, it's what it calls for, and I am proposing these projects. And I'll just say that, I am not in favor of a silver bullet of putting three 40-unit apartment buildings and 67 townhomes all in one place in town. That's the opposite of what 21st century planning looks like, and it's just wrong. It's, it's 20th century thinking. Now, I realize I'm gonna get outplayed tonight, so that's fine. The second thing I would point out to you all, and this is really important, I actually wildly in favor of water and sewer in town. Um, I definitely want it in North Sherman, and I'd like to see it in all of the town. However, the way this process has gone down has been really, really bad. It's been done in private, and that's another conversation that the Attorney General will deal with. But lastly, I will say, this legislation puts Toll Brothers in a position of controlling all of North Sherman's water capacity. They control it. They have two votes, and you need four to do an...
Excuse, excuse me?
Madam Moderator, these people are not the moderator.
They are not, you are correct.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I'm all set. Okay. The, the, the other individuals are not the moderator. Um, so I think you are next.
Thank you. Mark Senate, 75... Hello? Hello? Okay. Uh, Mark Senate, 75 Russell Hill Road. I would like to underscore with Tom Trainer, the point he brought up, and the gentleman who was formerly on the Board of Health, just to make clear to everyone, with all due respect to my Meadowbrook and Coolidge, uh, fellow residents, understand your concerns. I hope they can get addressed. This, as I see it, is an opportunity to give us the option to do what we want to do, not to do it. And I, I can tell you, let's say there was somebody who wanted to build 50 or 60 or 70 units somewhere, like an apartment, big apartment building, we don't pass this, and we haven't met 40B. All these concerns about water, again, it's gonna get hit again, it's gonna come up again. So this is an opportunity to solve all of that. It's not perfect, but wait until you get a 40B plan you don't like. Tough luck. It's gonna get passed. Thank you.
Adam May?
Adam May, planning board, and I would like to address two things. One, as I just mentioned, this is about a district. This is about creating a legally defined district. This is setting up parameters, people that had fears of once you have water sewer, then the whole town becomes water sewer. This is a precisely legally defined district for that reason. The other thing is, we need a legally defined district in order to have any discussions of an intermunicipal agreement with framing here. We cannot, since the 2017 plan, for years, at the select board level, at the planning board level, at other boards and hearings, for years, there's been discussions, how can we make this happen and not, how can we build an apartment building in town? Everybody says the apartment building rentals is the only way. How do we do this without affecting our groundwater seriously or impacting, um, you know, the, you need infrastructure. You'll get every other town, there are not a lot of other towns that are solely septic and well, and you'll get other towns, and we get advice from the state on how we should approve, uh, go forward. And the only way to really do this safely is to have infrastructure. We cannot have infrastructure without a district that's legally defined and approved by the state, and so this is the first step. This does not have anything to do with one single developer over another. We can't have any discussions with the developer unless we have a district that's been approved by the state. So regardless of whether you like the developer being discussed or not, we can't move forward as a town, and we can't offer Meadowbrook Common Resident, I mean Meadowbrook residents and anyone else potentially affected by any other contamination in that part of town infrastructure without an intermunicipal agreement in order to provide that. So we need to pass this district.
Thank you, Adam May. Okay, I see no one else waiting at the microphone, so I am going to close the debate. This will be voting on advisory's motion for Article 5, and Ron, put it up there for us. Thank you very much, Ron, you've done human's work tonight. All right, this is the motion played by advisory that we are voting on, and I would ask you Motion passes.
Madam Moderator?
Uh, yes, Sean.
First, I want to introduce myself this time, Sean Colleen, 11 Bubba Street, and I'd like to move to reconsider Article 4.
All right, um, so we have a motion to reconsider Article 4, the, get, wait, oh, she's embarrassed. That is a motion without debate. It is a two-thirds motion. And you are, um, Sean, where are you, Sean? Yeah, you are looking to reconsider Article 4 as it was passed, including the amendment, is that correct?
Counsel can help me, but I think we need to reconsider it, and then I'm gonna move to remove...
Yeah.
...the amendment.
Okay, okay. So the vote right now, without debate, is to reconsider Article 4, and it requires two-thirds vote to reconsider, and I won't just deal with the numbers this time, I'll deal with the percents, so. Uh, I ask you to please vote now. All right, motion, can you put the percentage on? That, you're on three. Um, okay, so it passes by to jurors. Article 4 is now open again for debate.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Colleen.
Motion to remove the amendment to the original, uh, motion.
Okay, um, there is a motion to remove the amendment that was passed, and that motion has been seconded, and we now debate that motion just made by Mr. Colleen. Correct? Yes. Bob?
Madam Moderator, a number of people have left, it's, I, what is it, 10 o'clock at night, and we're reopening things? This isn't democracy, this is, it's rigged. I'd like to ask town council, is this right?
All right, all right, um, I, I will...
Thank you.
I will...
This is not democratic to do what you just did.
This is what town meeting is allowed to do.
I'm asking if town council is saying it's okay to do what just happened.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, it is okay for town meeting to reconsider a motion that's been made earlier this evening.
All right, um, so there is now, there is now debate on this motion, to re, uh, not to reconsider, I'm sorry, to remove the previously passed amendment from the original motion. So an opening debate on that. Um, Mr. Spurling?
Dr. Spurling, thank you. Um, I think it is totally inappropriate to, after so many people left, to reconsider this a second time, knowing that not half the people have left. Whether or not it is legal according to Massachusetts law or not, I don't think it is the appropriate thing to do, and therefore I recommend that everyone vote against reconsider, um, removing this amendment.
Is there other comment?
Moderator?
I'll, I'll recognize Marion first. Well, I disagree with the last comment. Uh, people who were leaving heard what was going on, they left by choice, uh, and the people who stayed, uh, are interested and want to make this happen, and it's legal, and we should go ahead.
Mr. Colleen?
I think the merits of removing this stand for the last discussion, and the amount of amendments they made to the amendment.
All right, is there other comment? I'm sorry. Okay, hang on a second. So there is a motion, the, the current motion is to remove the amendment from Article 4. Okay? That is the, so the amendment that was made to Article 4 that passed, can we put that up here on the screen? All right, this is, this is the motion that amended Article 4. This Article 4 is conditioned on the requirement to extend public water and sewer access down Meadowbrook Road for all Meadowbrook Road residents at the same time, it should say, and the installation of the public water and sewer pipe down Coolidge Street for the Meadowbrook Commons and Coolidge Crossing projects at the expense of the developer. This motion is open for debate. All right, over here.
I'm Sarah Wiley, Coolidge Street, 94. Um, you know, I don't live on Meadowbrook, uh, but I do feel like it's important to stand up and talk for them at this point. What we've seen tonight is the town vote on putting, uh, its Safe Harbor and Silver Bullet entirely on these two streets to bear the burden of the construction, to bear the risks. We also know that these two streets have got, uh, you know, they are down, uh, from the plume, uh, in general chemical, and we have made no provision to ensure that these residents are taken care of. Uh, we've passed a sewer district where we haven't actually established that it's fiscally responsible, we haven't established that it's going to maintain low rates for low-income residents, which we've concentrated all in this area, and we've built no provision to ensure that there is fresh and healthy water supply in this area. It's a really important matter for this town to protect the families in this area. You're asking them to bear the burden of all of this development, and this was passed by a very narrow vote, and we've now had people who are very interested in pushing it in the other direction push for a reconsideration of it, when people who may well have made the difference in this vote already left. I have to agree that it's highly unfair, and we need a process that really protects the residents who are bearing the burden here, and that's what this amendment is trying to achieve.
Thank you. Uh, someone else up back here?
Hello, Michael Steller, 205 Woodland Street, um, also a professional civil engineer in Massachusetts. I've heard a lot tonight, I would like to first recognize Marion's, uh, observation, just my personal observation, that we did not lose maybe half the audience. Um, the, the, uh, proposal by, uh, Sean Colleen was heard by, I think, a lot of the people that were leaving, so I don't believe that this is non-democratic, I believe that, uh, we are following due process now, rehearing this. I think there's been a lot of, uh, new comments made tonight, new amendments. Um, I think the basis, getting back to the basis of what was proposed in the special town meeting is probably the more appropriate and more applicable. Um, there's a lot of details that I think still need to be worked out, of the rooting of the line, uh, et cetera, and I think there'll be due process to, uh, resolve those issues and connect those residents that need and want to be connected. I think we're putting too much on this amendment, I think the, uh, or the motion, I think the amendment's put too much onto the motion. I fully support, um, going to the legislature, getting a water and sewer district. I think the details of the economics, the details of the rooting, the details of the main are something that should be worked out later, and will be worked out later. I don't believe that they should be part of, uh, this amendment, so I, I do support, uh, reversing this and just going back to the basic motion on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Lincoln? Coralinda Lincoln, 10 Great Rock Road. I'd like to channel my inner Sarah Raggy and call the question. So we vote on calling the question, there is no debate on calling the question, and the calling of the question must pass by a two-thirds vote, so if Ron can throw a slide So you are voting now only on calling the question, not on the question itself. All right, please vote now. All right, so the question is called, there is no more debate, uh, if you can put up, Ron, the amendment that this, um, motion seeks to withdraw from Article 4. I'm sorry, can I hear you, Paul?
Could you, could you explain the no vote?
Yes, so, um, okay, we voted to call the question, the, um, but there is, yes, wait, okay, yes. Um, a yes vote will remove the amendment from Article 4. A no vote will leave the amendment in there. Is, is that clear to everyone? Okay. Um, do you have, do you have a question, Mr. Wolf?
My order, um, a yes vote presumably removes the amendment, well, a no vote would mean that, what, Article 4... Four as amended would stand.
Yes.
Would a yes vote mean that Article Four without the amendment has to be voted out again?
Yes. Right? Yes. So this is the amendment to Article Four that a yes vote will remove from Article Four. A no vote will leave it in Article Four. Once it's, once that vote takes place, we'll deal with what else happens. I don't want to confuse people any further. So questions moved. Everyone has had an explanation, I think, to tell them what they're voting for. I'm sorry? No, don't start the vote yet. It's paused. At what number? Okay, it is paused, so let's have a 10-second countdown. Yeah, okay.
Madam Moderator, can you just clarify, is this a majority vote or a two-thirds vote?
This is a majority vote.
Just the screen says two-thirds.
The screen has two-thirds.
All right, I will remove this, redo it, nobody will see.
Okay. Trying to be, just use an old slide. We're restarting the voting because there was some confusion. The slide had indicated it was a two-thirds, but it is not. It's a majority vote. Okay, so we are starting the 10-second clock on this vote. Please vote now. All right. Motion passes. The amendment is removed, and now we need to vote again on Article Four. So let's put up Advisory's motion. Do they have to move again? Okay, so I'm going to have Mr. Sickle remake that motion, and we'll need a second, and then there can be further discussion. All right, Mr. Sickle, or Mr. Winters, whoever, somebody, please.
Madam Moderator, I move favorable action. I move favorable, favorable action and that the town approve the amended preliminary development plan dated August 15, 2023, on file in the office of the town clerk for the Meadowbrook Commons project located at 104 Coolidge Street, the original of which was approved pursuant to Section 5.6.3 of the zoning bylaws in conjunction with amending the zoning map to EA for the subject property at the special town meeting of December 5.
This is not the right slide. Sorry, go ahead. Let's get the right slide up there. So this is the. This is the original motion, so if you want to look through it again, or, okay.
I move favorable action and that the town approve the amended preliminary development plan dated August 15, 2023, on file in the office of the town clerk for the Meadowbrook Commons project located at 104 Coolidge Street, the original of which was approved pursuant to Section 5.6.3 of the zoning bylaws in conjunction with amending the zoning map to EA for the subject property at the special town meeting of December 5, 2017, provided that the project is in compliance with the zoning bylaws of the town, including the required number of waterable housing units.
Second. Is there a discussion? I hearing none. We are ready to vote, and so I ask you to please vote now. Motion passes. Mr. Colleen?
Motion adjourned.
Thank you very much.